I think it matters if the mics are on.
I had commented on one thing besides this. When we started the landscaping ordinance in 2004, they tried to do one crazy thing and I'm worried we're headed back. So we got the other please. I think the key point is that is what we put in the comm. In fill comm is limited to five acres.
Just says, Patrick H. Sheldon, this is an area that she's trying to be strip.
I'd call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone, and if we could stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, can we get into the roll call, please?
Mr. Jamie Gerardi.
Here.
Mr. Christopher Poole.
Here.
Mr. John Moody.
Hi, here.
Mr. Adam Muns. Mr. Derek Potlet.
Here.
Mr. Chris Williams.
Here.
Chairman Charles Brack.
Here. Hand the proof of publication, please.
The items were advertised typically times on May 7th, 2025, and May 21st, 2025, or by application of certified and licensed site listings.
All right, thank you very much. And we have no minutes. So for those of you who are here with us, maybe the first time, I'll go through briefly the nature of the meeting today. We're the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice a month. We serve as the local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. Excuse me. I'll get to that.
Please silence your cell phones.
Yeah, right. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any development, code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board, County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioner meeting. And we have those dates available for those of you who need them. Format is as follows, three sections. Typically, we have continuances. That's where the staff or the applicant has requested a continuance for any number of reasons. It's been our custom to approve continuance requests unless there are extenuating circumstances. We have consent, and those are items where we have not heard an objection from the public. And we go through those one at a time. If there's anything on consent that you'd like to have heard today, please raise your hand when we go through that item, and we'll pull it for discussion. Otherwise, it will remain on consent, and we'll vote on it all at one time. Then the regular items are those items that are neither being asked for continuance or on consent. And we'll go through those and fully vet those today. Applicants will have five minutes to make their presentation, and the public will have three minutes to ask questions or state their concerns. And then, following the presentation, the applicant will have an opportunity to come back and answer any questions that were raised during that time. Has there been any requests for additional time?
No, Mr. Chair, there's no additional request for time.
Okay, thank you. For those of you who just heard my phone go off, if you have one, it's a good time to put it in the silent position. And so before we start the regular meeting, is there anyone here to speak to anything that's not on today's agenda? I'm shocked. Please come forward. State your name and address. We may not even need that anymore.
No, I keep thinking, why am I still every time anyways? Nancy is with 34110, a nice place. So I've just got something short and sweet. I want to ask you to keep in mind today and in the future that the citizens of Pasco are suffering right now under higher taxes, overcrowded roads, not enough law enforcement, or fire. And consider the entitlements that are already out there when you're thinking about approving another multimillion subdivision or housing or whatever. And right now, by the time you get the roads fixed, you're going to already be overcrowded again with the amount of entitlements out there. So I'm just hoping that somehow you could keep those things in mind. I know that the land use plan is kind of fuzzy with things. I think there are enough holes in it to drive mat trucks through. So you can land on either side when you look at it and make your decisions. And you could also recommend that we have stronger rules and regulations that slow things down. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on with the meeting.
Mr. Chair, we do have somebody signed up on WebEx to speak for general comment. She does not appear to be online, Sue Young.
So she's gone? Okay. All right. Well, we can always come back to that if we have to. Okay, I guess we can get started.
Okay, good afternoon, Planning Commission members. Gianna German, Planning Development and Economic Growth. The only item that we have on continuance today is PC1, and you are sitting as the local planning agency for this item. Item PC1 is PDE 25-0202, a development agreement in the name of Homes by West Bay LLC. And a continuance to the July 10th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 PM in Dade City is being requested.
Okay, this is the only continuance request that I hear a motion. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay, I hear a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the staff's recommendation. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay.
The first item that we have on the consent agenda is item PC2, and I would like to note that we received expertise for this item that had been filed with the Clerk's office. Item PC2 is PDE 25-7878, a zoning amendment in the name of 23846, State Road 52, LLC/duty calls for a change in zoning from a C2 general commercial district to an I1 industrial light park, excuse me, light industrial park district located in central Pasco County, south of State Road 52, approximately 1,274 feet west of Aaron Cut Off, containing approximately 10.09 acres. And this is coming with the recommendation of approval from the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anybody here to object? Okay. Next, PC3.
Item P3, you will be sitting as the local planning agency. It is PDE 25-0092, a comprehensive plan amendment CPAS 2421 Flint Commerce Park, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map 2-15 and Sheet 23, changing rez 9 residential nine dwelling units for gross acre to comm commercial and OF office on approximately 5.78 acres of real property located on the north side of Pure Water Way, formerly known as State Road 54, approximately 680 feet east of Allen Road. This is coming with the recommendation that the local planning agency find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right. And is the applicant here?
So I just had a question on that one for staff. I mean, we don't necessarily need to pull it, and I'm not in opposition to it, but just... The... Looking at the background, the project overview of this, and saying that the proposed amendment to the comm flu does not meet the locational criteria to allow for an amendment on the entire site pursuant to FLU 162. So I'm just... Maybe I'm missing something in FLU 162. I'm just wanting to see why the entire site couldn't be amended to comm, and we're splitting off a portion of the five acres, or of the... It's a little over five acres, so...
Sure. Amy Toll, Planning and Development. So 1.6.2 has locational criteria at the intersection of an arterial and/or collector roadway. This only fronts an arterial and/or collector roadway. So because it's not located at an intersection of an arterial or collector roadway, then it would be subject to 1.6.4, which does have that size limitation.
Okay, so that's probably what I was missing, was that one word. Because it was, I was seeing it should be limited to areas adjacent to existing collector and arterial roadway intersections.
Correct.
So, okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Great game. All right. Any other comments? Okay. And the applicant, I asked for the applicant, right? Applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay. So we have...
Mr. Chairman, somebody raise their hand.
Oh, okay. All right. Is the applicant is not present?
So we have to pull it?
Yeah. So this is for PC3, is that right?
Right. Okay. Cindy Buckel.
We'll probably need to pull it from the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just pull it from...
If you could sit back down, we're going to pull it from consent and then discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah. You can sit right there in front. Okay, so there's one more consent item. PC4?
Yes, sir. Our last item on consent is item PC4. It's PDE 25-0158, a development agreement in the name of Project at VOPH LLC, a modification to the development agreement to design, permit, and construct a portion of Wort Elam Road in exchange for transportation development fee credits in the villages of Pasadena Hills. And this is coming with the recommendation of approval from the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department. This is the last item we have on consent.
All right. Anybody here for comment? So you know what? Have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, PC2 and PC4.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay. So we'll come back to PC3.
Good afternoon, Eva Stevens, Planning, Development, and Economic Growth. Before you is PDE 250092, a comprehensive plan amendment CPAS 2421 Flint Commerce Park. The applicant proposes the comprehensive plan amendment. We are changing from rez 9 residential nine dwelling units for gross acre to comm commercial and OF office. This is to allow commercial and professional office uses on approximately 5.78 acres. The property is located on the north side of Pure Water Way, formerly known as State Road 54, approximately 680 feet east of Allen Road. There is an accompanying rezoning, RZ 7870, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, C2 General Commercial District, and R3 Medium Density Residential District to C2 General Commercial District on five acres, and PO2 Professional Office District on .78 of an acre. Here is a location map. We are in an east market area outside the urban service area. And here is a context map. It's showing that we do have commercial to the west. We have lows to the south. Sevilla Zephyr Hills to the east. Here is an aerial. As mentioned before, existing future land use is rez 9. We have rez 9 to the north, east, and west. We also have to the south rez 9 in ROR, retail office residential. And the proposed comm and office. The proposed amendment is consistent with the following comprehensive plan policies. Policy Flu 164, neighborhood commercial uses. Policy Flu 165, office development. Policy Flu 187, economic development. Policy Flu 1810, preservation of capacity for employment generating uses, as well as Policy Flu 814, the east market area establishment. And with that, staff recommends the local planning agency find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan. I can answer any questions you have. We also have Barbara Willhite available on WebEx if you have any questions for her.
Any questions from up here? Nothing?
Had mine answered already.
Okay.
Hi, Planning Commission members, this is Barbara Willhite.
Hey, Barbara.
I don't have any, I don't have anything else to add. I think you've seen what you did a great job. I will just see what the public comment is and then respond from there, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine. We just need to swear you, I guess, in case you have a comment later. So have you been sworn?
Okay. I don't think anybody's sworn.
Yeah.
So anybody who needs to speak, please stand and raise your right hand.
Do you swear or... That's when you're about to give the truth, I hope you're up.
Okay. I see you, Barbara. Okay. All right, so is there anybody here to comment on this application?
Do I, you need my name and everything else?
Yeah, name and address.
Okay, Cindy, C-I-N-D-I Buckel, B-U-C-K-E-L, 5938 Frontier Drive, Zephyr Hills, Florida. Okay. I have lived out here my entire life. I am very familiar with Allen Road and Chancy Road. I am very familiar with how dangerous the intersection at Chancy Road and Allen Road is. Any further addition of anything out there other than another home on maybe two acres would be detrimental to the safety of the people that live out that way. We are understaffed, seriously understaffed, in EMS, in fire, in law enforcement. And I can say this honestly, because I was a firefighter, paramedic for 15 years. I have witnessed, in fact, I witnessed the fatal motorcycle accident on Bellamy Brothers the other day. I stopped before anybody was even there because it took a while for the ambulance to get there. These are things that need to be addressed before we keep adding on and on and on and on and on. We are quickly approaching 700,000 residents in Pasco County in an 862 square mile piece of land. And it's just seriously detrimental. I have witnessed accidents everywhere I go. I have been involved in two serious accidents that nearly killed me here in Pasco, and they were not my fault. One of them was on a motorcycle. So I am asking you all to please consider the residents. We do not have the resources. We do not have the wastewater treatment facilities. We really do not. It is a fact, and you can candy coat it any way you want. I know the facts. I have been doing this since 1989, and I have gone through three different sets, or four different sets of commissioners, four different sets of planning committees. And what I'm seeing is the residents are no longer heard. Our opinions don't matter. I have horses. I've had to move three times because development literally flooded my pastures. Horses cannot stand in water, and it's very expensive. Each time I move, the property values go up. I mean, there's five and 10 acre parcels that are up in the million dollar range. I can't afford that. I'm 66 years old, I'm retired, and I have been involved in this county from the get-go. And it's time that I would wish you all would slow down somehow. And this, this thing you're planning for Allen Road, there's been multiple fatalities at that intersection. So much so that the person who owns the property that there's cattle on has had to put up heavy-duty railroad ties because that fence has gone through so many times. So please, just consider what we have to say.
Before you sit down, let me ask if there's anybody that has any questions. My, I wanted just to make sure I understand your objection.
My objection?
The objection to the change in zoning from rez 9 to commercial and office.
On Allen Road?
You're concerned about congestion. If it's already zoned rez 9, you can build a lot of out...
Okay, okay.
I didn't, I finished asking the question.
Go ahead.
If it's already zoned rez 9, there could be a lot of homes built on that property. Maybe that would even be worse than having an office there.
Do you realize that both Allen Road and Chancy Road are very narrow country roads that are now, that now have tractor trailers, construction trucks? that are now, that now have tractor trailers, construction trucks, going up and down both?
Did you understand my question? That's what I want to know. My question was, do you know what the difference in?
Yes, I do.
Is it gonna be?
I understand, I understand.
I'm not done, miss. Please. Is there gonna be a difference between the number of cars that are gonna be at that property if it's zoned residential nine as opposed to an office? That's just the truth. That's just the way it is.
I.
So you gotta have a cogent argument if you're gonna convince us not to do it. And I'm asking you, do you have a cogent argument about the traffic count there?
Yes, I do. I think.
Where are the, where are the facts?
Okay, well, here's the facts. The one thing that could happen and hasn't happened yet in Pasco County, but it's happened in every county around here because this isn't the only meeting I attend. I attend Hernando, I attend Polk, I, I attend Citrus.
I wanna try to focus on this property.
Okay, but there, there is no commercial anything on Allen Road except for when you get up towards where Habitat for Humanity is and all of that. Okay, so to add a commercial anything onto that road, I would much rather see homes go up.
Just to clarify, this isn't on Allen Road.
It's not on Allen Road.
It's on Pure Water Way, which is a few blocks down from where Allen Road intersects.
Well, Pure Water Way, I mean, you all rename roads. I mean, it's like Highway fifty. Highway fifty-four is Highway fifty-four. It's not Collier Parkway. Bruce B. Downs is not Bruce B. Downs. It's Thirtieth Street. That's how long I have been out here. Okay, so anything commercial in that area, Bliss Feed Store is the only commercial thing that I know of that's on Chancy Road right now other than when you all decide to use a corner, the corner of Allen as a place to put all the construction vehicles whenever you're doing any kind of road work. So yes, I do, I am strongly against any commercial anything on, on Pure Water Road.
You do understand this is a mid-block location. This is not at an intersection. In fact, that's why they can't zone the entire site. They can't get the land used for the entire site to be commercial because it's not located at an intersection.
It's six hundred and eighty feet from the intersection, is that correct? Am I correct?
I don't know what the distance is, but it's not. I'm, we're looking at a map. We're putting it up here to show you.
That's what I heard. That's the number I wrote down, and that's what I heard.
Looks like it could be.
But we don't need any more commercial. We, Chancy Road is nothing but commercial once you cross three oh one.
Well, my, my point, my point is.
Where's your pointer? Show me, show me exactly. I need, I need to see it exactly. Somebody pointed out. That little blue piece that you wanna, that little five acres you wanna turn into something commercial. But it's still gonna go up and down Pure Water.
It's already zoned commercial.
There's a lot of places along there that are zoned commercial that don't affect the traffic because they're smaller businesses. I'm very familiar with that road. I travel it. I have traveled it for the last fifty years. I mean, I remember when it was dirt. I remember when Chancy Road was dirt. So my concern again is for the safety of the residents of Pasco County because we are understaffed, seriously understaffed with EMS. I'll give you a case in point. My husband literally had a heart attack and I wasn't home. He called nine-one-one. He was told, you need to drive yourself to the hospital because by the time we can get to you, it'll be at least twenty to thirty minutes. Okay, now as a paramedic, he could've died. And fortunately, he was able to drive himself to Zephyr Hills Hospital where I actually took him to a Tampa hospital because there is not one Level One trauma center in this whole county. And this is why our fatalities last year were a hundred and ten. This year, we're already up to a thirty. I keep track of them. So you keep building, and not only are you killing wildlife, you're killing human life too. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, um. Would the applicant like to respond?
Sorry, Barbara Willhite, sixty-three, twenty-seven Grand Boulevard. Just a couple things. I think the planning commission has already kind of played out. It's rez nine today. It's got commercial nothing on portions of the property. Residential has save our homes, residential has, um, the property tax, um, caps and so forth, um, property tax exemptions, commercial projects pays full added lower tax. So there's the situation with urgency and fire and all those things. This is a use that will outtax by generating full added lower taxes. And as you've pointed out, the property is on Pure Water Way, or Pure Roadways, as we call it, State Road fifty-four. Um, utilities, uh, review the comp plan and express any concern regarding capacity. And with that, we request that you recommend approval to the boards, U of D, A, please.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions from up here? If not, I'm here. Motion?
Motion to approve, uh, PC three.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
I'm not hearing you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Before we get to the last item on the agenda, I did want to note that for item PC two, um, there was a revision to the deed restriction to remove the word duty calls out of the deed restriction. And it now states two-three-eight-four-six, State Road, State RD fifty-two LLC. The last item that we have on the agenda is the tree preservation workshop.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there somebody? Oh, hey, Terry.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Victorus Petos, Planning, Development, and Economic Growth. Uh, this item is the tree preservation workshop that the Planning Commission requested. I believe it was at the March twenty, twenty twenty-five, or thereabouts. Um, planning, maybe it was March twenty-two, uh, Planning Commission. And, uh, the topic for the discussion that was requested was, um, what are the big ideas that we want to, uh, to pursue and propose for the ordinance that was presented that day at the Planning Commission that would help to move the needle some more? To date, we have identified increasing fees. And actually, there's a resolution that's moving to the Board of County Commissioners uh, that will increase the fees associated with tree mitigation on a developable acre basis. And then, um, the amendments that were previously presented to the Board, to the Planning Commission, and we have those redlined if we need to reference them, um, during this workshop discussion. Um, those amendments were mainly about cleanups, reformatting of the text, uh, closing various loopholes, further defining definitions, and basically memorializing current practices. But one of the comments from the, from the dais was, you know, what are we doing to, uh, advance the needle in terms of tree preservation? Thus the request for the workshop, and thus today. Um, to note, uh, we did mention and advertise the, well, we did mention the workshop at the May nineteen Horizontal Roundtable Meeting in order to invite additional stakeholders to participate in this public session should they wish to attend and provide their commentary. So with that, it's really the Planning Commission's workshop. I don't have anything to present more than, um, what was already previously presented in terms of a draft ordinance, but we do have that copy available if we want to put it on the board.
So Terry, just procedurally, did, were people led to believe that they could come speak at this workshop? Because I, I'm only asking because normally when the board conducts a workshop, there is just staff on the board. There's no members of the public that speak. But I don't, if we led people to believe they'd be able to speak today, I don't want to deter that if we, if we made that representation.
Yes, I think at the Horizontal Roundtable, I did mention that if any of the engineers or any of the stakeholders wanted to come to share their ideas, they could.
Okay, then my advice, Mr. Chairman, is you do open it up for any public comment that wants to speak.
Okay. All right, again, I'd like to welcome everybody, uh, to the Tree Preservation Workshop and give you an opportunity to give us your input if you have any thoughts or ideas. It's, you know, it's, uh, become, it's come to our attention, especially recently that, uh, we need to do something to try to preserve some of our forests in Pasco County rather than just going and clear cut and develop. And, um, so we're, we're trying to come up with some best practices and some regulations that would, um, steer us in that direction. So if anybody is in here, is here today that would like to speak on that so, topic or have some ideas, please come forward, give us your name and address, and we'd be happy to listen to you.
Jennifer Sini, two-five-six-oh-five, Apple Blossom Lane. I feel like I just rolled backwards in time a few centuries. It feels like I should be done with this, but y'all keep bringing up really interesting topics. So about the tree ordinance, to be honest with you, I was a little surprised to hear Mr. Petos say that he had let the public know about this because I heard nothing. The last information I had was from Kristen King in June of twenty twenty-four. Now, if I'm understanding correctly, you have gone through some revisions, you've been adding some things, you've been doing some work. So please forgive me, I do not have the latest and the greatest from y'all. But I will tell you what my reaction was last year, and I think it would still hold true today. My opinion last year was the, uh, ordinance that was being proposed was, was just unnecessarily complex. It had expanded to several more pages than the original, and there is a, uh, tree value matrix that was a little bit, in my mind, difficult to follow. So my feeling was, if you'll forgive me for saying this, is you need to get more simple. So why not start with, please bear with me, keep your hands off of any native or non-invasive tree of X diameter or larger and keep your hands off any endangered tree completely. So this would be applicable to individuals, developments, government, utilities. So that's my opinion, but here's the reality. The reality is there are always legitimate reasons for messing with trees. But if you start with the premise, the goal clearly defined of don't mess with the trees, period, then some simple things can be added to that for those obviously going to happen necessary exemptions to that rule. So start simple and then add simple. And I have some suggestions. Number one, when clearing any land or lot for build-out, always have a tree plan and a permit. Two, if a site is rendered unbuildable due to tree coverage, then clear only the minimum necessary. Three, clear cutting an entire area or site or lot is not allowed. Number four, replace any trees removed with only natives or non-invasive trees on an inch-for-inch basis, mixing species to avoid a monoculture. Make sure the tree is the right plant for the right place, use the best management practices. And here's the kicker, no bonuses, no incentives, no exceptions. Then follow that with the, um, breaking these rules will cause or result in a fine for each tree removed. To me, that's a simple place to start. I'm not saying throw the baby out with the bathwater because the staff has worked really hard on this, but I think a deep breath and a step back and starting with, pardon me, something a little bit more simple will give you a better product. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just as a, just as a matter of point of clarification, um, I noted that it was, I spoke to the Horizontal Roundtable on May nineteen. Not that my announcement was any kind of public notice.
I'm sorry, you tapered, you tapered off on the land there, Terry.
My note previously was that, uh, I told the Horizontal Roundtable, uh, that there would be this discussion on June the fifth. My announcement wasn't necessarily a public notification like you would put in a newspaper or anything like that. It was just telling area stakeholders who regularly attend our monthly meetings that this workshop was gonna take place.
Okay.
However, I would note that your agenda is pub, published on our website, so it's not like it's hidden from anybody in that we're talking about this.
It just wasn't advertised extensively. Yeah, I, I, and I do think it's a good idea to hear public comment on these items. Uh, I liked a lot of the suggestions that the last person just made, so let's, uh, see who's next.
Terry, just real quick for clarification, just so I'm aware. You said there's, there's a fee revision that's going through the ordinance process right now? Is that what you said at the beginning?
It's not going through an ordinance process. So if you recall, when the tree, the changes to the tree ordinance were brought to the Planning Commission, I don't wanna oversimplify this, but you basically said it wasn't good enough.
Right.
Um, and there was a suggestion made to, to increase their fees. They could just do that by resolution.
Okay, so resolution.
So the resolution is merely addressing the increase in fees. If you choose to, to remove a tree, how much you have to pay into the tree mitigation fund, and then what are the uses of that mitigate, tree mitigation fund? It's not addressing the larger issues that Miss Sini just talked about or that the Planning Commission was concerned about in terms of clear cutting a tree. It's simply how much you have to pay into the tree mitigation fund? And what, and what can that fund be used for? That's all it's addressing.
And the revisions or the proposed ordinance that came to us last year has basically been on hold to, till we got to this workshop?
Yes, those, those, uh, the, the draft that was presented in March did not advance.
Okay.
Um, and the workshop is happening before we make any further refinements to that draft. Um, I will note that some of the things that, um, the speaker re, just mentioned regarding complex tables and things like that, that's not in the draft that was presented in March. So she's probably seen a very much older version of an earlier idea. So just FYI, that's not in the redline that we might share on the over screen, on the overhead if you, if you want to see that, um, document from March.
Okay. All right, Gary, thank you. Any other questions? All right. We get your name and address, please?
My name is Karen Byrd, uh, three-six-four-four-five, Arbrox Drive in Zephyr Hills. And the main reason I came today was because when I did see the notice about this meeting, I noticed there was gonna be at least some discussion about trees. Um, I'd like to compliment the previous lady who spoke because I think she put it very well. I wasn't able to find, uh, the current requirements for builders, but I think we're all, just about everybody is concerned about the excessive building that is going on all over our county and particularly on the east side here. And in the course of that, a lot of trees are just yanked out and destroyed. It's very frustrating. And I feel that there should be definitely some requirements with these large, um, buildings that are going on, apartments, single-family homes, whatever. There should be something in the requirements that they're required to plant trees, uh, the appropriate kind of tree for Florida because, for central Florida, that does make a difference. I'd also like to point out, um, some comments from, uh, the Resilient Pasco Project that Pasco County over the past thirty years has experienced an increase of approximately five point nine degrees Fahrenheit of maximum, excuse me, maximum temperature. of maximum, excuse me, maximum temperatures during the summertime months. And as we all know, the forecast every year, each summer seems to be getting hotter and hotter. Extreme heat events, the loss of vegetation to development can lead to higher temperatures in cities, referred to as the urban heat island effect, et cetera, et cetera. The Greater Zephyr Hills area was identified as a focus area for extreme heat vulnerability to more closely examine the impacts of extreme heat on a local level. Parts of the area lacking in green spaces, and this lack of green space is a contributing factor to urban heat. So I think that's extremely important that we have something in the requirements for builders that they do not only replace trees, but add more trees. I know there's currently a requirement for retention ponds, which I think needs to be updated. But by the same token, I think trees, adding trees and taking care of them should also be added. And I see that in the vision you showed, prevent the elimination of mature native trees from new development. So hopefully, there will be more about this, and I think you, I was having a hard time hearing for some reason. You mentioned there's going to be another workshop on trees?
I'm not sure if there'll be another workshop.
It hasn't been decided. We would, again, we would probably send out a notice if we're going to do that, but we're trying to get as much done as we can at this workshop, and then we'll see where it goes from there.
However, if any additional land development regulations were to come out of this workshop, those would come back to the planning commission at a notice public meeting. So and they would go to the board of county commissioners as well. So there would have to be future meetings to discuss any land development changes that came out of this workshop.
Okay, thank you.
Planning Commissioners Clark Hobby, 109 North Borough Street, Tampa, Florida. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I missed the first hearing. I heard the hubbub about it and so on and so forth, and I don't know what staff's been doing over the last year on it. But in my mind, there are three things that we need to keep in mind when we work on this ordinance to try to bring it forward. And I know there's a lot of building community anxiety on different parts of it, and some of those guys are really into the minutia and what the costs are going to be. But as I think about this and try to take a long-term view on it, there's probably three big issues we need to be focused on at the macro level. And I think the first is we need to incentivize keeping the trees that we want, which is really, for most of us, really oak trees and live oaks in particular. And whatever system we bring forward, it needs to incentivize people to leave them. So as an example, if it were me and I were designing this ordinance, I might say if you already had a payment into the mitigation fund of X amount, 50,000 bucks, maybe if you have a mature oak tree and you choose to leave it, maybe there's a credit for keeping the tree up for a certain amount of time. That way, and this is something that Commissioner Gray and I are very much aware of, the people who are out doing the site work for our clients are mindful, and the designers are looking at the mature trees and the oak trees in particular and being more mindful of it. Because what I find is a lot of the times when it gets down to the mass grading exercise, we don't have enough of an incentive and/or disincentive with the oaks in particular to get these guys to design around them. And I think it's kind of irresponsible for people not to do that. That's the first thing. The last two are a little bit interrelated, and they're more words of caution. Having spent a lot of time working on the 2004 tree and landscaping ordinance that kind of started all this stuff, I would just remind you all that in 2004 and in some subsequent drafts over the years, staff has tried to bring forward ordinances that basically would have the developer reforesting areas that don't have trees at all right now. And that was a big bone of contention, and staff really fought us in 2004. And the first draft actually required people who had hayfields, if you did any development, you have to come in and end up with a certain number of trees per acre. And that is just way out of line, in my opinion. We've got to be careful about that.
Don't we sort of do that already today? So for instance, one could go develop a hayfield, and in our MPUD, we require X many trees per lot?
You do, but the way it was done in 2004, where the development started and began or ended was unclear. So like if you had a thousand-acre ranch and you were just going to build one house on it, the implication out of the drafts in 2004 was you had to reforest the entire ranch. And that was, I mean, literally hours of discussion about that. So you need to be careful on the drafting. And then the last thing is just always have to be mindful of the ag guys and the legitimate ag exemptions that are available under state law because we have clients right now that have to go out and take down oak trees sometimes, and they plant orange trees. And if they're doing that for ag, they're allowed to do it, even though we may not like it. And I know Commissioner Simpson did that a few years ago in East Pasco, and at first people were worried about it. I said, he's planting an orange grove. I mean, he's allowed to do that. That's the state law. So I just, anyway, you guys are much more attuned to this stuff. I didn't make the previous hearing, but I wanted staff to be aware that we always got to be mindful of these things as we're bringing these ordinances forward. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right, I didn't do it ten times.
You didn't stand it fast enough.
Nancy Hiswood, three four one one oh, nice place. So I think Jennifer Sini did a wonderful job on this. I think she had a lot of great ideas. But I don't like the idea of a tree mitigation fees or incentives for trees, actually. Tree mitigation is probably a good idea. We'll see where that goes. But the incentives for trees, I don't know about that. A long time ago, when I first started this, we didn't have this tree problem. They left up trees. I don't quite understand what happened. And what Clark was talking about, reforestation is now called rewilding, and I don't think that's a bad idea. Basically, when they're taking trees, they're not only taking trees, they're taking things from the whole county. We need those trees to support our water and to support our air and the heat index. So I'm not sure about some of those things. Let me make sure I've covered everything here. I didn't hear about the workshop either. I would love to see a workshop done with the public because you do hear about the problems with the trees and how they're taking them down all over the county and stripping them from everything. I'm not sure that's such a good idea. That's going to come back and bite us sooner or later. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? You'd need to state your name and address again?
Yes, Cindy Buckle, five eight three nine Frontier Drive, Zephyr Hills, Florida. Okay, the trees, I like the idea of a tree mitigation, but I don't like the idea of giving these developers any more incentives than they already get. We are already giving them incentives to get the business out here, which we, the taxpayers, are going to be picking up. Recently, I live on Frontier Drive, which dead ends into the Upper Hillsboro Wildlife Management Area. We have one way out of our road, and that is to go down to Marks, to Gateway, to 54. They just cleared 27 acres that were loaded with 100-year-old oak trees that were loaded with squirrel nests, bird nests, gopher tortoises that were killed. But at any rate, yes, the heat gets, it gets warmer here every year. I work with horses every single day, and they'll tell you it's 95, but it feels like 107. No, it's 107. When you take trees down and you replace it with concrete and asphalt, you're going to get heat. It isn't fossil fuels, it's overdevelopment, and the entire state of Florida is doing it. But Pasco is passing every other county in Florida in how fast and rapidly they are bulldozing trees down. In this, in this instance, they had orange fencing around trees that they were to save, and for some reason, they didn't. Now, I actually drove onto the site, stopped the person with the bulldozer that was pushing trees down in the orange fence and asked him why he was doing it. His answer was, we accidentally started to take some big branches down, and we were instructed just to take them all down. They saved one tree out of 75 live oak trees that were over 75 to 100 years old. So mitigation, I like. We do have to start saving the trees. You cannot plant seedling oaks. They don't provide any shade. And palm trees, let me tell you, I lived in the Keys for a long time. Palm trees are rat and roach nests. That's what you get with palm trees, and that's a fact. So anything you all can do to start saving some of the trees, I am all for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and anyone else? Not seeing anyone. Let's have a discussion from up here.
I do have a question. Terry or Patrick? I don't know which staff person's leading the charge on this. Is that you, Patrick, or Terry who?
It was Patrick. The project's transitioning over to us now.
Okay.
But he can help. He's got.
Well, the question really was, I mean, this is not an issue unique to Pasco. So there probably are jurisdictions in the state of Florida where they're adequately protecting, even if you just go with Mr. Hobby suggesting the large oak trees or, you know, the certain categories of trees or the ones that Jennifer Sini mentioned. It seems to be there's some agreement that there's a certain category of trees that should be protected and not clear cut. Has anybody researched how other jurisdictions save those trees and where it's actually working? And I mean, our, you know, our, our tree canopies are probably not materially different than they are in the rest of the Florida. So have we done any research to, can we just cut and paste somebody else's regulations that are doing this the right way?
I think the research has been done in that regard. I haven't personally seen it to dig into it, but yes, the idea is well taken that we can go to another ordinance, see how they have affected.
I've driven through other communities where they're actively in the development. I see some barriers around the large trees that are not being clear cut. So it seems to me that that would be fairly easy to go find out what are they doing to protect that tree from the bulldozers?
Sure.
Well, may I? All we have to do is enforce the code we have. The purpose of MPUD districts are, A, to encourage innovations in residential and non-residential development and redevelopment so that the growing demand for housing in the county may be met by greater variety in type, design, and layout of dwellings, to encourage the thoughtful consideration, inclusion of supporting non-residential uses where appropriate, and to encourage the effective use of open space in recreational areas. And this same section about the purpose of MPUD districts are, ends with E, I'm sorry, D, to encourage more flexible land development, which will respect and conserve natural resources such as streams, lakes, floodplains, groundwater, wooded areas, steeply sloped areas, and areas of unusual beauty or importance to the natural ecosystem. Since I've been back on this planning commission, which is coming up on, we're about three years, coming up right about now, I've watched almost every, I haven't seen but a handful of Euclidean zonings come through here. And Terry and I had a nice discussion about some of the things he's working on for the new comp plan and trying to fix this. We use and we abuse the MPUD. The MPUD is supposed to be for something that's special, that's out of the ordinary. What we've now done is use the MPUD as a vehicle to maximize the density on every piece of property. And we don't negotiate our MPUDs. I suggested this when we had the last discussion about trees. We need a new way of doing business. When a developer comes in, we start with, you start with R4, 60 by 100 lots. You get 40 by 100 or 40 by 70 or 40 by 80 lots after you preserve wetlands, after you preserve trees, after you preserve topography. Then we let you cluster the houses and build them all 10 feet apart, if that's what you want to do, after you save those things. We don't give those things to you on day one. And I see that, from what I've seen, that's what we do. I come in here and I see MPUDs that have nothing that's unique associated with them. They're a grid pattern of streets of 45-foot wide, when I first got here, they were 40-foot wide lots, now they're 45. And we just cram them and jam them in as much as we can. The other thing that I think we need to do is we need to understand why are trees killed? It's our own land development regulations, and I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with these land development regulations, but we have to understand this. When we design a development, it all starts with stormwater. And water flows to the lowest point. So over on the coast, that's the Gulf of America. In the middle of the county, that's the groundwater. The wetland intersects the groundwater. That's the bottom. So that starts, where's the bottom of our retention storage, starts there. Then we have to store all of the runoff up. Then we have to go uphill to the roadway. Then from the roadway, we have to go uphill to the house because everything has to flow downhill. And I hear this, I hear the constant complaint from the public. All of this new development is five and six feet higher than the other development, and all the water's running down on us. That's exactly why. Well, unfortunately, because if we had no stormwater regulations, then you would be flooded even worse than you're getting it now. That appears to be the only technical solution. But when you go in and you add feet of fill to a site, you smother the trees. Therefore, it becomes necessary for the provision of stormwater drainage to eliminate all the trees. So one of the things that I've been thinking about and how this discussion came about, I know Mr. Gray was very upset after seeing the Newport Coroner's development. And I can tell you, having lived over there for almost the entirety of my life, I was very upset to see the clear cutting of that development. And what we have is a lot and block subdivision. We don't have clustering, we just have cramming of homes. How many homes can we cram onto this land with no regard to the preservation of the resources that were there? Maybe we need to start treating trees or stands of trees, not individual ones, but stands of trees, just like we do wetlands. And right now, in our comprehensive plan, if you preserve a wetland, you get a density bonus for preserving that wetland. Well, maybe we should treat those large stands of trees just like wetlands, and you can have a density bonus for preserving the trees to force you into clustering away from the trees and allow those trees to escape the filling that's necessary when you develop. And the worst place that this happens is in the middle of the county. In the middle of our county has lands which have groundwater, sometimes in the summertime, right at the surface or just inches below the surface. So the bottom level is the, is the level of the ground today, and everything has to be filled up from there. So there's no chance to build in the middle of the county without significant filling, which then requires smothering the trees. So the only way you're not going to smother the trees is not develop in the area where the trees are or to reserve some areas on those properties for the preservation. or to reserve some areas on those properties for the preservation of tree, stands of trees. I've worked in lots of cities and counties that have a lot of crazy ordinances about grand trees and historic trees. And I've seen all kinds of super heroic efforts try to work around and save one tree. But pardon the old adage here, we're, we're missing the forest for the tree. We saved one tree and we spent millions of dollars to save one tree while we mowed over entire forests that we could have preserved simply by observing what the purpose of our MPUD zoning district is. We just don't observe that anymore. I will say this, I'm encouraged, I had a nice discussion with Mr. Pedos yesterday about his thinking on the twenty fifty comp plan and the future land use scheme. And I'm sure there'll be lots of discussion later, but he's thinking about these things. He's thinking about the overuse and abuse of the MPUD and trying to create a new future land use scheme that will utilize more of the Euclidean district standards so that we're not giving away the farm on day one. And I, I appreciate the thought he's put into it. I think some of the devil will be in the details we talked about, but he's clearly put some thought into this. And when we talk about the comp plan, hopefully some of this can get solved. But that's just the way I see that from up here is that we, we abused the MPUD. And I even see it with the commissioners in the requirement now for these binding concept plans, right? We used to get MPUDs and they kind of showed us the layout and then the MPUD plans have evolved into four arrows that show how we're going to get in and out of the site and a big blank canvas for the developer to do whatever the hell they want. That's not an MPUD plan. That's just a list of I want this entitlement, that entitlement and the other entitlement and I paid a lawyer enough money to get it for me. That's my thoughts is that, and when Mr. Gray and I had some conversations about this, one of our suggestions and may, and I know Mr. Goldstein has some different opinions about it, but in our current comp plan, we give a bonus, a density bonus to developers to preserve wetlands, which in ninety-nine out of a hundred cases, they can't get a permit to develop in the first place. So why are we giving you a bonus to save something that you're not allowed to touch to begin with? Yeah, you're allowed to lap off a little corner of a wetland here and there to accomplish a project, but you're not allowed to wholesale blitz wetlands. We've got state and federal laws that stop that. But yet we give them a bonus for complying with the law. Think about that. Now, I know David had said that that's because you assign some value to their wetland property and I guess I'll have to do some thinking about that. But maybe we should treat those large stands of densely forested areas the same way as we do the wetlands.
Yeah, I want to be clear, I'm not opposed to giving a bonus for preserving tree canopy. What I've had concerns with is you taking away the bonus for wetland preservation because you in theory could have a site that is heavily, has heavy amount of wetlands and if you don't give them some value for that, those wetlands that they can sort of move to their upland areas, you might potentially have a takings argument or regulatory takings argument.
Sure.
So I'm not in favor of removing the bonus we give for wetlands, but I'm not opposed to giving an additional bonus for preserving tree canopy. I do want to make one comment though about MPUDs being the tool. I get your point that the existing code probably has more teeth than we're actually using. However, I also believe in some level of predictability for the development community. And I think that a developer is operating in the county, they have the right to know, hey, this is, this is what I can do in Pasco County in terms of, these are the trees I got to protect. These, this is, you know, this is the bonus I'm going to get. And I think that should be codified, not case by case depending on which MPUD reviewer is you're negotiating with on that particular case. I think, you know, Clark shouldn't get a better treatment than Barbara when it comes, just because they had a different MPUD reviewer negotiating with. So I think there needs to be some predictability in our code that says, these are Pasco County's tree requirements. Whether it's Euclidean, whether it's MPUD, there should be baseline requirements that all developers who operate in our county know this is what you've got to do. Whether it's bonuses codified, whether it's, you know, incentives that Clark's talking about.
Point, not all development is the same either. We're, we're here talking about this more in the residential development context and not talking about it in the commercial development context. And I would tell you that they're two different animals. If I'm buying a two acre site to build a sit-down restaurant, it's probably presumed I need all of that two acres in order to provide the restaurant, the parking and the stormwater retention. And if there's a tree in the way, it's going to be, it's going to be removed and there's going to be a payment to a tree bank. In the residential context, what I'm trying to say is we should use the MPUD. The MPUD is a canvas which we can create different zonings to fit a certain site. We use our MPUDs more like a Euclidean district. When we come out with, and Terry, I'm sorry, because I'm not trying to pick on you personally by this, but when we come out with a PM twenty-six or whatever that says you shall have, that all MPUDs shall have a minimum lot size of no less than forty-five, well, we're giving you forty-five feet from day one. Well, then that might as well just be a Euclidean district, just like R4 is, it's sixty by a hundred. It's like we've created, with PM twenty-six, we've created a new Eu- new Euclidean district for the MPUD that so long as you follow this memorandum, this is what you get. When, the whole purpose of the MPUD was to provide for flexibility so that we can save things. And we're like, like wetlands and other net slopes that in fact are specifically mentioned here in the purpose of the MPUD district. That's the part we're missing here.
Yeah, again, like I said, I'm not, I wouldn't be opposed to revisiting how we're using MPUDs. I'm just, my only point is that I think, even if we go to more Euclidean districts, which I support what you're saying, there should be defined requirements for which trees you have to protect and then which trees you can take down. And if so, what you need to do to mitigate for it. And I, part of my concern here is we seem to be overly focused on the protection side of the equation. And I'm not saying that's totally misplaced, but we're kind of also ignoring the mitigation side of the equation too.
So the problem with that is, how long have we had a tree ordinance in Pasco County that requires an inch for inch payment for trees? Had it as long as I've been doing it here. I'm getting close to where I'm going to be retiring from this business. And we've been paying fifty dollars an inch and I don't care if it's a hundred dollars an inch. If I can write a check to kill a tree, I'm just going to write the check. And that was the problem that we had when we discussed this ordinance and the crazy scheme that was presented before us. And I tried to make this as a very simple example. For a thirty inch oak tree at fifty dollars an inch, I pay fifteen hundred dollars. If you double the fee, I pay three thousand dollars to be able to kill that thirty inch oak tree, that big tree, right, Seeny? If the lot I'm building is worth a hundred thousand dollars, does it matter if I pay fifteen hundred dollars or three thousand dollars or five thousand dollars to kill the tree? The math doesn't work in favor of the tree when it comes to the money, the payment of the mitigation. Unless you're going to make the mitigation a hundred thousand dollars for the tree, how are you ever going to make a dent in it?
So, I didn't get to finish my sentence. I don't, I agree with you that the existing process isn't working. My point was that there may be some communities where they did take down trees, but what they replaced is pretty good. I mean, Chuck and I live in the community of Longleaf that we have a very nice oak tree canopy along our, I mean, I mean, I don't know if you've driven through Longleaf, but I mean, pretty nice tree canopy there.
And how old is Longleaf now?
Two, early two thousands it was built.
Okay, so we've had twenty-five years of tree growth. Those were when they were planted, the trees were this big, now they're this big.
Right, all, my point is, yeah, so my point is that there probably are examples where there was some clear cutting but were caught replaced, ended up being a pretty good product. I, I don't know what caused the developer of Longleaf to plant so many oak trees that are now developed into a pretty nice canopy, but maybe we should figure that out. Why do we have some communities that clear cut it and then replaced it and created a pretty good canopy? And then we have others that what got built is just, doesn't have much there.
Well, you can, you can go on the northern section of Pinellas County and you can see lots of densely populated areas there that are full of trees and they have walls and, you know, not plastic fences. And, and they look great. And they look, somehow I managed to do it. We did it years ago in Beacon Woods. That was all built with curv- curvilinear streets. You know, because, just because you have a forty acre piece of property doesn't mean you need to have a straight street everywhere you go. You know, they need to be some curve and some, some dynamics to it and.
And Beacon Woods was a master planned MPUD that actually adhered to what the intent of the MPUD district.
I, I guess where I'm going with this though is that was just, I'm not even sure that was regulatory, what occurred in Beacon Woods or Longleaf. It appears that the master developer just thought that would be a benefit to the selling of homes.
Exactly, that's exactly what it was.
I'm trying to figure out, why is that, why is this?
I mean, I, I think you got to keep in mind, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of things in play here. I mean, I, I've been doing business in this county for twenty years as myself. And I've seen different regimes and different theories in the planning department that directs you with one goal in mind that may be detrimental to another. For example, it wasn't that long ago, everybody was being pushed to grid street patterns because of pedestrian and connectivity and getting vehicles off the road. Well, what does that do? That impacts the trees indirectly. So, I mean, there, there's, there's a bunch of moving parts, there's a bunch of things that need to be kept in mind and, and played as we go through the process.
Although I would point out that Longleaf has a grid, street branded entry.
Right, right.
So it is possible to be done.
Right, and maybe, maybe the answer, I mean, when you look around and there's other municipalities, I mean, maybe the answer is that maybe the, the starting point or the planning value, maybe that's not sufficient. You're planting these little tiny trees, I get it, I go around all the time and I look at these little trees that are being planted. I'm like, man, my kids aren't even going to see these things be big enough to be worth anything. But, I mean.
Well, I will also tell you the other problem we have is that sometimes the county will say, plant, plant those little trees.
Right.
And then the CDD or HOA leader comes in and rips them all out because they say, oh, it's interfering with our sidewalk maintenance or whatever. I mean, they.
There's street trees that interfere with the utilities and then, you know, all the other things that are all in play.
So we actually can't put both trees in the five, in the three foot wide utility strip between the back of the curb and the sidewalk, which, again, I'm sorry, going to need to keep attacking the PM twenty-six, but that's, that's, that's the consequence of that. And then we're going to go through all kinds of crazy machinations about root barriers and all kinds of stuff and.
Well, the reason, this is as a historical perspective, the reason that we get, we're into this place is because when rapid development started here in the, in the sixties, it was because we had a big freeze and it killed all the oranges. And so what, what did we have? We had acres and acres and acres of dead orange trees. So you come in and you build homes on those trees and that was an alternative to replanting, which it was just too expensive to do at the time. So now where you have some of those orange trees, you have forest. And so we're going in and instead of there being dead orange trees, there are beautiful trees there that we're just ripping out. And I just think, honestly, I think Miss Seeny had some pretty good ideas as far as designating certain trees that unless you have a, you know, compelling reason to remove the tree, you just can't remove it. And because exactly what you said, make the, make the, you know, make, make the fine thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. If you're a national developer, you can come in and write the check and take the tree down.
Right.
You know, the, in, in those days, in the early sixties, we didn't have any national developers to speak of. They were all mom and pop developers, you know, so they weren't going to write any big checks to take trees down. And so, but I think exactly what Jamie said, I mean, there's so many things that come into play that the county has done in, you know, with all good intent. But the combination of all those pulling factors has made it, made us, given us a situation that's untenable. We can't keep doing it that way. And when I drive down the little road and I see that, all that clear cut area there, it just, I pull my hair out with a little bit I have. And it's, it just drives me crazy because I think, how come I couldn't stop that? You know, it was just, it's just crazy because.
I've been involved over the last few weeks in a lot of discussions with Mr. Hobby and his Will Height and the staff over the conservation element of the comprehensive plan. And one of the pushes in the proposed conservation element is for open space. And I'm trying to think about that and maybe Terry, you can help me, I'm drawing a blank. We don't really have, if someone comes in and does an MPUD, that we don't have any requirement in our comp plan that says you need to reserve ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent, whatever a number may be of the property as open space.
Other than our neighborhood park ordinance, no.
Other than the neighborhood.
That's the only, as far as I'm feeling.
Park ordinance and we've, and we've allowed that to be whittled away.
Well, okay, I take that back. There are, there are certain areas of the county like that have conservation subdivision requirements, so.
Who does those?
There's been a couple in, in the northern part of Pasco that have preserved open space. It is not a neighborhood park, but, but I agree with you, it's a rare situation.
Yeah, and a lot of the open space parks, there's no trees.
I think the other observation too, to Mr. Murray's point, is that the codes are all designed specifically to, can I use the word react to single family detached type of development? Whereas we get, we often get different kinds of even residential product, but the code is organized in such a way where your neighborhood park's requirement basically wants to treat multifamily, townhomes, apartments, whatever, the same way as single family. And then you get these variations that you, that Mr. Murray's probably referring to in the MPUDs. That's just an observation to consider when we're thinking about open space requirements.
Correct, and right, and when we talk about open space, remember one of the discussions we had quite likely just debate about during one of these comprehensive plan meetings was not all open space is the same. Demanding open space out of a one acre commercial piece for a fast food restaurant results in what? A piece of lawn? Whereas demanding ten or twenty percent open space from a five hundred acre MPUD maybe results in a significant stand of trees being saved. Keep away from that.
To the chairman's point though, actually the neighborhood park ordinance somewhat discourages them to be preserving trees because it actually requires an open play area.
I agree.
So he probably wouldn't be able to have trees.
I disagree.
But its purpose was slightly different than preserving trees. Its purpose was, going back to John Gallagher, he wanted a place for the kids to be able to kick a ball. That was his purpose.
Which we, I didn't have hardly anything at that, at that stage.
Right, and because we had a number of subdivisions that were being built with no, no place, no local park for the kids to go play.
As a kid that grew up in one of the first subdivisions in Port Ritchie with no, I had to play softball in the street. We didn't have an, we didn't have a park.
Probably, but I mean, but that ordinance, besides the issue that Terry raised, which is it was built, it was designed for single family, you know, the development community has found a way to, I would argue, work with it in some ta- in some cases, improve on what the minimum requirements. I mean, there's a lot of neighborhoods that have very nice neighborhood parks.
I think one of the mistakes that happens is that when, when new regulations are created or contemplated and to Terry's point, they're written as one size fits all. And that doesn't, that doesn't take into account different housing types and different development patterns. We, we write a regulation around what is the problem of the. With, we write a regulation around what is the problem of the day and we never kind of think beyond then and then. Later on as the, as the industry evolves and we see these new housing types and whatnot, our regulations aren't equipped to handle those.
I mean, I can tell you, I was just in DC and I. You know, I saw some blocks where it was a tiny little park that was. Probably less than a quarter of an acre, but it had so many nice amenities. It was a dog park and a playground. It was heavily utilized. But because of the amenity, because of the amenities on it, not just because it happened to be a quarter acre. So I think you can create in an urban environment. More with less, but the problem is to Terry's point. I agree with him that in a multifamily scenario, you probably should have less acreage devoted to open space, but. It should be highly, more highly amenitized so that it's usable space, which we don't currently do. I don't believe.
Yeah, we're talking about trees today.
Yeah, we moved on, sorry.
Well, we'll do another workshop on that one.
Well, but would you not have some provision that says, you know, part of that open space may not be. A true open space, but it's a standard truth and just that counts as your part, but. Again, you'd have to figure out what the appropriate.
Right.
Balance is of that, cause you do want true open space or a field or a dog park or whatever, but. Why can't a group of trees where somebody can go walk around or. You know, that, why not that count to some degree?
I agree.
So Terry, I agree with you that we're here to talk about trees, but parks and trees are somewhat interrelated because there's.
Yes.
There's still areas that you're not putting houses on or development, you know. It, it's an area you're preserving for some public purpose.
Right.
That is not gonna have a house or a commercial business.
Right, it, it, it's gonna be, generally speaking, in terms of government owned land. It's gonna be mostly right of ways, rights of way and parks. And of course, there's other ways that local government owns property too, that we can put trees in, in terms of. Using mitigation fund dollars, for example, um, but when we're talking about development and how development is. Um, growing, it's usually in the right of way setup and in the park setup that we have the most play for the trees. At least, at least a play for the trees that can last time. Because a lot of times in our code does this right now where. There is a requirement to plant trees back after you've cut certain things down. I don't think it's a one to one ratio though. It doesn't, certainly doesn't play out that way, but. Trees are often planted in rear yards and in front yards. Well, that's great on day one when the certificate of occupancy is issued, but over time when a resident doesn't like that tree, because they wanna put in a pool. In their backyard, the tree goes away.
Well, there's other considerations too, so. I always remember this, I did a project back in the, almost about the two thousand four, I think it was two thousand three, four timeframe. And it was a shopping center over in Kissimmee. And the city of Kissimmee had an incredibly tough tree ordinance. Worse than the one that was proposed with the crazy point score and all of that. And that was the year the four hurricanes right in a row crossed the state. And Kissimmee was especially hard hit because it had gotten hit by Wilma and whatever the other one is that went over there. And it was amazing to see how quickly the attitude of the city changed after they had to clean up all of the downed trees that blocked all of the roads. And took out all of the power. There's a right, there's a, there's a place for trees and there's a place for not. You know, some people, they go to get homeowner's insurance and the homeowner's insurance company comes by and says. That tree's too close to your house. We're not gonna insure your house unless you take that tree down. Well, and it turns out that tree was one of the ones we had, were required to plant in their whopping ten foot front yard in our. Pasco County MPUD, which if we plant a tree in a ten foot front yard. When it falls, where's it gonna fall? On your house or on your neighbor's house? Doesn't have any other place to go. Whereas the people who live out on an acre. I've had multiple trees fall on my property. So far, so good. I haven't had one fall on my house. I had a close call one time, but. They, they have room to fall. So.
Well, you know.
Guys, think about that.
One thing about where David and I live is that our, all of our lines are buried. So if a tree falls, it's not gonna take out our lines. And I don't, I never understood why the county didn't require new developments to put their, since not put in overhead lines.
I won't necessarily disagree with that. I don't, I do know this.
They don't look good and they aren't very lines in a, in a residential subdivision is a problem, but I know that the transmission of electricity.
Through underground lines is a problem. They have to use things like oil cooled conduits. It's a big deal to, to do that because of the heat generated, but. For smaller currents, I know of course you could do that underground.
Well, it made a big difference during these last hurricanes because I didn't even lose power.
Sure.
Everybody else did.
Terry, I, I have a question. So along the new fifty two, I'm. Happy to see they're planting lots of trees. Um, along the right of way there. Is that, is that DOT doing that? Is that Pasco County doing that? What's, what, um?
In, in the actual State Road fifty two right of way?
Yeah, where they, the new Clinton Avenue extension, there's been a considerable amount of landscaping and trees that are in there, which is great. I'm happy to see that. I was just curious, who was funding that and how that was coming about?
I, I'm not speci- I'm not sure specifically about that. I do know from past. Like we did a couple of years ago, there was a grant on US nineteen to put in trees in medians and things like that and FDOT. Said, you know, if you're gonna put in trees, they're on you, local community. Um, you, uh, plant, you. Take the grant, put them in, but, so they paid for it. But the local jurisdictions then had to maintain those trees. That could be what's happening on several ways to do too. I don't know.
I mean, that, that's consistent with DOT's general position is that if they put anything more than grass in. The local government has to assume maintenance of the landscaping.
Is that an agreement the county does with DOT or is that just what DOT says and then here you go, you're responsible?
There's formal agreements, for example, in nineteen, we had, we had to agree to maintain. Those trees in the median if DOT planted them. Now, we thought we had an agreement with the business owners that they would do that. And all due respect, they sort of defaulted and so the county had to come in and basically. Maintain the, that landscaping. So, but my guess is that any landscaping that you're seeing on a state roadway system. It's the county's paying to maintain it, if it's anything more than just grass.
Yeah, I, I will just add. It's a historical caveat, if you will, that the, um, the planting project on nineteen went in fairly smoothly. Um, and in some defense of the businesses, what then followed was COVID and everything shut down. And the, the first maintenance years of that project were severely hampered. By the, the economic drop that took place because of the pandemic. And that kinda hamstrung the project, that project unfortunately, but that's some of the background, what happened there in case people think. No one's been trying to do something for nineteen.
Right. It looks a lot better, okay, then.
Yeah. But we do have, we do have provisions in our comp plan and I think our public works and transportation department. We've earmarked, I think it's like three percent in our comp plan that says that when you build a new road, that was three percent and will go towards. Trees and landscaping of the roadway. So we do make an attempt. And when we fail to do it, Commissioner Trump Starkey tells us.
Yes.
We do make an attempt to make sure that any new roads that we're building have more robust trees. Now, when they're initially planted. They're fairly small trees sometimes. You see that on ridge roads, but the hope is that eventually that will develop into more mechanical.
Well, Commissioner Starkey gives me an airfall frequently too, because you know, she wants more trees planted on our schools, which is nice, but then. Now you have considerable more expense with our maintenance department who is already stretched.
You're sort of making her point is that that's the money, it, it's the maintenance. It's not necessarily the cost of putting a tree in.
Right.
It's like having a child. The real expense is raising a child, not having the child.
That's correct. Now you tell me.
I would have used an LG boat, but. But you're right, that is, it's very true. And then as John said, you gotta have to be, you know, get a storm come through and now you. And not to say we shouldn't be doing trees, but again, there is a legitimate expense associated with that.
Okay, and the, and, and it's. It's a conundrum because the idea of the MPUD is that we want to cluster the development so that we can save natural features of the land. But the move, the, the tighter we pack them in. The worse it gets for planting a tree in somebody's yard because now that the tree is two feet from the foundation of the house or three feet from falling on the roof.
Yeah. So I'm not sure we came up with any answers today. I, the. I think it would be helpful to staff, in my opinion, is if. You all do work in other jurisdictions, sorry, I mean, if there, if you're aware of other jurisdictions that. This goes back to my original point, that are doing a better job than us. When it comes to preserving trees or replanting trees. Maybe we should start there and say, because developers are working in those other jurisdictions. Apparently they're building things in those other jurisdictions. You know, it wouldn't be so crazy if we said we borrowed this from X county or X city where other developers are working.
I think it's important to understand. That we created the MPUD as a tool. To try to work around the resources. If we just get back to using it in the way it was intended. A lot of this problem may work itself out. The problem is we've gotten away. We've gotten, we've gotten some of the national builders addicted to. We've almost created them a new Euclidean zoning district. By telling them, okay, if you come in and do an MPUD and your lots are forty five by this and you agree to do these architectural things. And you agree to put in these curbs and these, it's all gonna be done for you. Well, that's no different than we just. You just defined R four a different way. It's now R six or R eight. Whereas the MPUD was intended to, you need to work around these wetlands. You need to work around these significant stands of trees. Or the slopes in the east side of the county, you know, we've got.
So I agree with you, Mr. Murray, but I'm also disagreeing with you a little bit because. We've had this opportunity to do this with MPDs for I don't know how many years. And for example, even on the replanting of trees. Until PM twenty six, until we came up with the exact standards that are in PM twenty six. It just wasn't happening, which we're talking about. So. The reason Terry had new PM twenty six is because there was no predictability.
Well, wait a minute. I'll disagree with you on that. Our current tree ordinance has a minimum number of trees per lot. That's been there and that's been there for twenty five plus years that I know of. That's not something new. PM twenty six didn't create that. There's always been, if you have a lot and there's a table in ADO, whatever number this is in the land development. Code, there's a table that says if your lot is this size to this size, you have to have this many trees. If it's this size to this size, you need to have this many. Number of trees and that's been in there. So that's just somebody not forcing.
Well. The, oh, understood. I, I think what David is getting at though is. If you were building a unit or a structure that was more than one unit. The code sort of fell, you fell off the cliff kind of, because it was designed for the single family detached concept. So even if you were doing duplexes. Wasn't clear direction in the land development code that thou shall do X or Y in order to plant a tree. PM twenty six identified duplexes, townhomes and up on how to deal with trees on site.
At the risk of. I'm not trying to make this a personal insult, but how long would it have taken us to write a code amendment to go in and fix that? Little problem.
Barbara Wohay tells me it took twenty years to do PM twenty six. So, uh, she never fails to, now that she's still online, but.
My, my, my point is whether you love or hate PM twenty six, it created some predictability and, and so. I, I'm not, I get your point that MPDs are being abused, but. I think the development committee has the right to some level of predictability, whether it's, I agree that our current regulations are not cutting it, but. Then let's fix them. I, I don't, I don't like relying on a process that changes every, with every different MPD that. Comes in. I understand that they're all psych, have their own psyche constraints in terms of what are the best trees. But there should be some level of predictability as to what our requirements are.
Okay, well then maybe that, maybe PM twenty six needs to have an open space component added to it. To, or a tree preservation component added to it to, so that there's some predictability. Okay, I know I'm gonna be required to predict. To protect any stand of trees greater than X many. Trees. If I've got fifty trees clumped together, I'm gonna be told I need, I, I can't touch those. Or I need to work around them. Or if they're absolutely in my way, then I'm gonna have to reserve at least that much space over in a corner of the property. Over here and plant a forest.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm the.
Then you have something predictable that addresses the problem. I'm not suggesting that I just wrote the next ordinance, but.
But even for that, I, you know, I, I think it would be helpful to. Find out how other communities are doing this where they're creating better protection of their tree stands.
Yeah, so, but you have to look at that not, we have sixty seven counties in Florida. And the topography in all sixty seven counties is not identical. Okay, the drainage problem that I have in central Pasco County is not the same drainage problem I have in the city of Tallahassee. Because I, I'm up, in Tallahassee, I'm on a hill. I'm not starting at the groundwater and going up. Mr. Gray brought up Beacon Woods as an example. Beacon Woods is a little different. In that the streets in Beacon Woods are cut into the hills. We had, we didn't fill Beacon Woods to build. And that's why they could save those trees, because we could cut and build the homes on the existing ground. We had the advantage of topography that allowed the water to naturally drain when we're in the, when we're in the central part of this county where the land is flat. The water has no place to go, we are forced to fill.
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head with that explanation, John, and I think that's what a lot of people don't realize is in a lot of places in Pasco where you have the clear cutting done, it's. It's not done so they can necessarily get more lots. It's done because that's the only way they can develop the land. You gotta bring in the fill, which kills the trees. They could leave the trees there, but then they'd be dead. Um, so.
Which, I agree with both you on that point and maybe the focus needs to be on the mitigation side.
Sure, well, I, I agree and I, I think looking at the other municipalities, I mean, there's other municipalities that have the same issues that. Find other ways around it. I mean, let's face it, our, our tree ordinance is fairly old.
Yeah, I have a question, um, and mainly for the, for those, for the folks watching at home. So, since we have engineers on the panel here. Um, i- if filling is killing the trees because essentially. You're putting more dirt between the sun and the clouds and the root structure, right? And the water can't percolate down. Um, can you design like well system, like a, I don't know what the right word is, like a well system that allows the trees to survive?
There are all kinds of systems out there. The most common one is the tree well. Okay, and then there's things called wain drains which allow food and oxygen to be. Added to the root zone of trees when you need to pave around a tree. There are, and so if I was doing a commercial development and I was interested in saving a particularly large specimen. Oak tree and I needed to build a parking lot around it, I might be able to use the tree well technique or the wain drain technique. But it's not a tool that I'm going to use in the thousand home subdivision context.
Is it just because it's, you can't grade that or it's too expensive or?
Well, it also depends on where does the tree fall. If the tree falls in the middle of the lot, I can build all the retaining walls I want. Allow, around the tree, but if it doesn't allow a house to be built on the lot, then the lot's useless.
I know that was always a burning question in my mind until.
Well.
And there are, and I mean, there, and there's lots of examples where engineers have used tree wells to, to save specific trees.
Well, and that is exactly one of the. Well, it's exactly one of the reasons why I think you need to somehow, and I, I don't know exactly the answer how you do it, but I think you need to incentivize this somehow because at the end of the day, like it or not, I mean, if, if it costs more for the developer, the developer's just going to pass it on. And it's just like raising impact fees. They just get passed through. And, and that's why in my opinion, we're at this, I mean, things have gotten so expensive, costs have gotten so high. And you're starting, starting to hear about affordable housing and all that. Well, this is going the other way. But I, I agree, and I think everybody up here agrees that it is an issue that needs to be handled. I mean, nobody likes going by seeing the, the clear cut open fields with open sunlight and no shade anywhere to be seen.
So, again, and I agree with you that not, the topography of all Florida is not identical, but there probably are counties in Florida that have similar topography to us.
Sure.
So, I, if we think there's some that are doing it well, maybe we should be.
Well, even in our county though, we have to recognize that we have varied topography. And in the northeast rural area, for example, we're concerned about preserving, preserving the hills, the hills. In the central county, in the central part of the county, well, we don't have any hills to worry about. Over in the northwest portion of the county, we have the coastal sand ridge, which Beacon Woods is a part of. And that allowed that development to save trees because that topography existed. And then as we get further in the southwest part of the county, we get down into the real low swampy as we're going down to the Anclote River. And this becomes a big problem for us where the water table's this far below the ground and again requires all of this fill. And when we're in the coastal areas, we have to go up in the air to get away, to get above the hurricane level, the storm surge levels. So, these are all things that have to be considered and crafted. I think one of the things we're probably realizing here is it is not one size fits all. It's going to depend upon, almost on a project by project basis.
However, I do think that on the mitigation side, it can be a little more uniform and predictable. I mean, I'm just going to give you an example of, you know, so Chuck and I live in Longleaf. There's a neighborhood right next to us, Ellington. Literally you drive down that street, there's not a single tree in the entire subdivision. So, there's something different with our mitigation requirements that they probably were this identical topography to start with. But somehow one community developed with this amazing tree canopy and the other has none whatsoever. So, there's, there probably is something different that's, you know, occurring. I don't know. Maybe one of you all can explain why.
That tells me that your development did something above and beyond what was required.
Oh. I know.
The marketplace.
The stewards of the land that that neighborhood was named after actually did care about the land. Unlike the unfair beat down that they take on Facebook every day about their improper stewardship of the land. They actually did care and plant trees. How about that?
Right. But I'm just, there probably was a, you know, I agree with you, probably it was the stewards of the land. But to me, that shows that there are probably mark, good market reasons to actually plant a good tree canopy and that the residents can enjoy it afterwards.
Yes. The other thing that I'd love to see in any tree ordinance too is, and I heard the one lady get up here and talk about palm trees and all they do is attract rats and roaches or whatever. Well, let's not forget that the state tree in Florida is disabled palmetto, okay? We heard Messine talk about the preservation of native, native trees. That's our state tree. There's a place for palmettos. And I grew up in an area that was a hammock. I grew up around pine trees and palmettos. They're not so bad. They do provide relief. They do provide shade. Man, I like eating swamp cabbage too.
Nice. The other thing is that they can be relocated.
Yes, they can.
There's no reason to knock them down.
So, what's the next step?
Well, I see Terry taking copious notes over here, so I'm hoping he might go back to staff. Well, I think Jamie and I, from an engineering perspective, are giving you reasons why trees are killed in the development process. We've talked about some of the zoning issues. And the staff, their job is to focus on regulatory. So, now maybe they've heard, purpose of the workshop is so you can come out and talk about issues and ideas. And then I assume Terry's taking notes because he's going to go back and think about all of these things.
Hope that Terry would talk to, whether it's the Starkies or whoever, we think there's communities in Pasco that have done it right, either through preservation or mitigation. Maybe we should be talking to those developers and saying, what caused you to develop this the right way? You know, even though you're subject to the same market conditions that the clear cutters are, you chose to develop your community in this way. What, what were the barriers to that? Like, you know, what, what would have caused you to go the other direction in clear cut as opposed to what you actually did? And maybe we should talk to the developers that are actually having to write the checks and figure out what would we need to do to get you to do what you did as opposed to clear cut? I mean, I, why not talk to the actual customers and say, you know?
And there are no hills on that fifty-four corridor like Beacon was.
Nope.
So, I mean, it can be done.
No, and I, you should speak, tho- those stakeholders should be consulted with. And they're the people that understand the costs of building those subdivisions. So, absolutely, you should speak with them.
So, as you're driving through the county, if you find some communities that you think did it right, besides where Chuck and I live, okay? Maybe tell Terry about them and say, hey, that one did a good job with their preservation. That one did a good job with their mitigation. Maybe we should talk to them and figure out what did they do. They apparently did it for market reasons, not, maybe not even regulatory reasons, but what, what incentivized them to do that? And what can the county do to push them in that direction? Maybe it's just a simple nudge that we can do with a density credit or a credit against some other fee. But, but since it's happening through natural market conditions anyway, in some communities, maybe there's not as much of a push as we.
Well, and then the other thing that we should talk about is, so the way we do require in the current tree ordinance, inch for inch mitigation. But when you're planting a new two inch or three inch diameter tree to make up for a thirty inch diameter tree, that means you need to put ten three inch ones in, right? And you can't plant, you need to have twenty feet of space or thirty feet of space between each one of those trees. Eventually you run out of space to plant, replant trees. So, there's a deficit and you need to make a payment to the tree mitigation fund. Well, for twenty years, we collected money in the tree mitigation fund and then didn't spend any of it. It's time to spend some of the money and go out and plant some trees. Or buy some land to preserve some trees as another. Maybe the commissioners need to talk about what uses there can be for the money that they collect in the tree mitigation fund.
That is, that is going to occur anyway as part of this update to the resolution. So, that issue I would argue is already in the process of being fixed.
Yeah.
They could plant some trees on schools for, for crests too.
Well.
Maintenance guy, I appreciate that.
It's, it's been used to help commercial businesses plant some trees or landscaping that are currently deboiled and treated. I mean, so.
Right. But there's still, even that, even for that use, they haven't drawn that fund down to, you know, next to nothing. I mean, there's, yes, it's there. And it's capped. And I will tell you that giving them ten thousand dollars, go out and see what ten thousand dollars buys you if you want to do a commercial landscape package. All right, it ain't much.
Right. But I'm, I'm saying.
That, that number needs to get updated.
So, that, that's all part of this new resolution that will, on the use of funds, that's going to happen anyway. So, I think you can assume that that issue has a quick fix.
I get scared when you say things like that.
Well, I, I guess I shouldn't say quick fix because one thing we didn't talk about through this whole thing is that there's a bill that passed the legislature. We don't know if the governor's going to sign it. But it's Senate Bill one eighty and it basically prohibits us from adopting any more burdens, restrictive or burdensome regulation between now and October first of twenty twenty-seven. Under the theory, it was put into an emergency management bill under the theory because we were impacted by the hurricanes and therefore we can't do anything more restrictive or burdensome. So, even if we come up with a solution, if that bill gets signed by the governor.
Is there a definition of restrictive?
No, there's not, there's not a definition. And the worst part is, is if, if you do it, you can be sued and, and have to pay attorney fees. And this is put in at the eleventh hour by the legislature, literally the last day of the session. It was tacked on to an emergency management bill, which there was nothing wrong with that bill until this got tacked on at the very end. Um, so it is, it's potentially going to affect our comp plan update, all the stuff that Terry's talked to you about. Potentially it's going to affect any land development regulation that we have kind of in the works. So, don't know if the governor's going to sign it. There's a lot of people asking that it be vetoed, but I don't. The problem is it's part of an emergency management bill that otherwise is probably okay. It has this provision in it. So, um, and the crazy thing is it applies to any place where the federal declaration occurred for these hurricanes, which is literally the entire state of Florida.
Yep. Wow.
It's not just, it's not just the counties like us that were actually hit.
Sixty-five out of sixty-seven counties.
Right. Yeah, it's almost the entire state of Florida. It's prohibited from doing anything that's more restrictive or burdensome. So, we don't know where that's going to end up. I'm hoping that it gets vetoed, but if it doesn't, you may not see many regulations coming through here until Terry.
On the question, because we've brought, even though it's a draft ordinance that hasn't yet moved forward and we're still working on it, does that count in terms of the tree ordinance?
Oh, it's, it's not only, it's worse than that, Terry. It's retroactive to the date of the hurricanes.
Oh, okay.
So, even regulations we've already adopted.
Kind of working on the back.
That, that are potentially subject to having to be repealed.
Right.
Wow.
My, my suggestion is that we press forward. And even if we have to put October one, twenty twenty-seven effective date.
I mean, that's, that's probably what we're going to have to do to a lot of our regulations.
There'll maybe be another law in the future that does the same thing.
Yeah. Well, we were named the golf, we ought to be able to do that.
Just a workshop comment.
I'll throw out Mike Medea as one that I think conservation and the tree preservation was done well. And I know the reason why it was done that because it was done by a local Tampa philanthropist who actually used to use the land for his enjoyment and the like. So, he put, there was a lot of personal touches that were, were done in it. It's Wilderness Reserve, which is right across from the, the high school on forty-one. And I think that's the difference between a, a local developer who actually used to use that land. I've had conversations with him and how much he used to enjoy it for personal, you know, his family and the, and the like up there. But it's going to be tough to have that same connection with national developers that are coming in and looking to maximize profit.
Took a note.
Just have to reduce their maximum, that's all.
Talks us down to economics. I mean, it's pretty simple.
It is.
Well, I mean, incentives makes a lot more sense. You, you get, you get further with honey than vinegar, right? So, it's, you know, the concept that you brought up about treating tree hammocks like wetlands and giving density credits and things like that, that seems to make a lot more sense. It seems like it would be more feasible and adoptable by most developers.
Yeah. But I also agree with Messine that we need to try to keep it simple so that everybody can understand it.
But again, not all, unfortunately, all land is not created the same. I had a conversation with a developer this week. He was involved in some affordable housing and he got asked by his lender, could he produce twenty-five hundred units in three years? And he came to me and he said, I want you to help me develop a template of how we do these. Well, unfortunately, there's no such thing. Every, every land development project is unique from the next. And there are no two that are, they're like fingerprints. There, there are no two that are identical.
It's as unique as the land that it's.
They may share some commonalities, but they're not, they're, they're all unique.
That's right.
All right. Terry. I know you have funny notes.
Do you have any thoughts on what you're supposed to be doing, Terry, or are you?
Um, just as a recap, we will take a look at other jurisdictions. Um, what did they do to protect? Who are they and what did they do to protect larger trees, but not just larger trees, the forest as a whole, like Mr. Mooney was referring to? We'll take a look at the idea to preserve stands of trees in addition to wetlands and provide what kind of, maybe there's a formula for a density bonus that we can work into the code for that. The types of trees to protect. Well, I think as a secondary to some of the big ideas on, on the open space requirement, we're going to have to figure out a threshold, acreage, certain sized properties, let's say, that can accommodate a place for mitigation trees to locate perhaps, whether that's either, whether that's through the tree mitigation fund or the developer themselves, sort of offsetting their fund payment by planting trees. Obviously, we heard the comments to keep it simple. So, um, we do have the code that we have that does have some cleanup work to be done in there. Um, so, uh, we will do our best to keep it simple within the framework of the overall land development code. Still have to deal with that. Um, I think those are the, the, the bigger ideas. Um, and I guess one, one, one idea that's kind of already underway as we were talking about for resolution purposes is the idea of increasing the fee, which is already under works. So.
Yeah. One other thing that just comes to mind, Terry, is that, um, I keep thinking, harkening back to the Little Road property. Would have made a lot of difference there if they would have left a hundred, a hundred and fifty foot buffer of those woodlands along, along the road because you, you wouldn't be driving down the road and just see a big stark blank.
It's interesting that.
That's, that's bold.
So, we require perimeter buffers around developments. What I find is interesting, and I have no idea because I wasn't involved in that design, but if we remember, most of Newport Corners was silviculture. And they chose to eliminate all of those trees. They could have saved very densely planted pines along Little Road to be used in those buffers. Other than, and maybe we should give some thought to this too. The buffer standards as written in the landscape section are very rigid, right? You need to have a tree every sixty feet in a continuous hedge row, whereas along, where Newport Corners was, along Little Road, that was silviculture. They could have taken a fifty foot strip of those pine trees planted in grids and they would have made a nice buffer for that community from the traffic, but yet that buff, that buffer of existing pine trees would not have met the requirements in our code. So, what I'm suggesting is some flexibility in the code for, for things like that. Now, we do, I will tell you that I've worked with staff on multiple occasions to use existing vegetation towards the buffer requirements if they accomplish the same general screening. But maybe the language could be fixed to be more flexible with that or not, maybe not require as much staff review. I'm not quite sure.
So, that's a good example though, where maybe talking to the developer would be helpful. Because I think the same developer that did what you, you all just complained about, I think developed Copper Spring on fifty-four where there is a, they left a stand of trees along fifty-four and built behind that stand of trees. And I think the same.
That's the one.
It was, it was the same identity, it was Lennar did both projects. So, what caused them to clear cut on Little Road and not clear cut on fifty-four?
I, I think the Newport Corners project is different than Copper Springs in the sense that, well firstly, Newport Corners was planned way back in twenty-ten timeframe. Uh, and they made modifications to it. I think it was like in the twenty-twenty-one timeframe. And, uh, they didn't start developing or building until twenty-three or twenty-four. Um, Newport Corners had the idea of creating a downtown, uh, west or east of Newport Ritchie. Hence the name Newport Corners because it'll have four corners that will have like a little downtown environment about halfway between, uh, Decubilis on the north and, um, Plath on the south. Um, so, I think that contributed probably. Um, the other thing that probably. The other thing that probably contributed is silviculture is tree farming. Maybe some are not familiar. I think the prevailing idea was because it was a tree farm, these, these trees were gonna get cut down anyway because they were gonna be farmed at some point or another. They were left alone and I guess they grew up fairly tall and they grew in thick because the tree farming, I'm making a presumption here, but the tree farming didn't seem very active when there was so much undergrowth among all of those trees. And so I think that maybe contributed to the idea that, well, these trees were gonna get chopped regardless at some point.
Yeah, oddly enough, I met with, I met with that developer after the development was approved and asked him about that. And they said, oh gee, we never really thought about that, but that sounded like a good idea. You know, but I guess at that time it was too late.
Yeah.
You know, and.
Right, but they did it for Copper Spring. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but I don't know why.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we should ask them.
Did they use the same land planner? I don't know.
I, I will say that for existing vegetation, there are many projects around the county where we're leveraging existing tree lines and whatnot, wherever we can find them, instead of putting an engineered landscape buffer. So that strategy is being used and deployed in quite few projects. That can't happen everywhere all the time because if the tree stand isn't there or if the tree stand is right in front of the main road.
Right.
When you're gonna be a commercial project, let's say, well, not much chance that that tree stand's gonna survive if, if you're on 54 or 56 and they want to do a commercial project or some kind of employment generating.
One of the things that I wanna make sure that we don't do is I don't wanna get so rigid. And I've seen this in communities where the regulation gets too rigid. Then, then projects become stuck in permit hell.
Correct.
Because there's no flexibility in the language. And then I'm thinking, up where I live on State Road 52, there's a tractor supply store there, right at the corner of Parkwood and 52, and there's accidents there every day. And part of the reason is the roadway's on a curve and the property next to the tractor supply is heavily wooded. And you can't see around the trees to see around the curve. So people pull out into 52 and they get T-boned because they couldn't see. I don't want regulations that would not allow us to come in and, for instance, take trees out so you can improve the sight line on a roadway or make sure that we don't lose sight of public safety too for the sake of a tree. We're all for preserving trees, but sometimes it becomes, we also have to make recognitions that sometimes you have to take them down.
Yeah, and preserve people too.
Yes, preserve people too.
All right, Terry. Great, good.
Terry, thank you.
Thank you very much for standing there. You must be exhausted.
Something Jennifer, Jennifer still wants to say something to her.
Gentlemen, I know this is very unusual.
Yes, it is very unusual, but go ahead.
Please, let me just say something. It'll be common.
Okay.
She said, go ahead.
I said, go ahead, even before you said that.
Oh, well, there. Jennifer Ceni, 25605, Apple Blossom Lane, Wesley Chapel. I am so glad that you're having this discussion in public, in particular in front of me because I am hearing you talk about basic scientific concepts. You're not identifying them as that, but you are discussing them, which is so important in a tree ordinance or a landscaping ordinance. For example, it works for trees too, clustering and continuity. So what you look at, Mr. Moody, in terms of your tree stands, is, is it isolated to a few trees in the middle of a big, huge, open space? Scientifically, that has very little value, even though you might be saving a tree that you think is beautiful and significant. However, if you've decided to hold a tree stand in the corner of the property that happens to connect up to another tree stand on another property or lead to, that's the continuity. That is very valuable in terms of wildlife and trees. Trees actually like to cluster. I won't get into the esoteric things that will make you guys fall over backwards. I will say one thing, trees communicate. That has been proven scientifically and they communicate through their root systems. And the more you can preserve a cluster of trees nearer another cluster of trees and you continue that throughout the county. Now, how do you do that when you take one development at a time? And by the way, I am talking development. I'm not talking about the single tree in the residential lot. Although I know that there are commissioners that really want to push that and I can understand that because you have developments all over with 45 or 40-foot lots with no trees. Ugly as sin and probably hotter than you know where. So there is a purpose for having residential trees, yes. But in development, if as a county you want to develop this concept of let's preserve the best we have, you have a resource. It's called the U.S. Forestry Department. And you can go there and you can see the tree cover. You can take it all the way back to the early part of the century. Even into the 20th century, you can go back that far. And you can see where the trees have grown, what trees have grown, where they've clustered. And you can then superimpose your comprehensive land use map over that. And you can get an idea of where your focus might need to be. Again, simplify, but understand the overall. So it was really good to hear you talking about these concepts, even though you didn't identify them as anything biological or scientific. You are discussing those things and it's important. Saving a single tree in the middle of Pasco County, in the middle of the Cypress Creek well field, I do understand what you're talking about, Mr. Moody. I live there. It doesn't have as much value as perhaps that clustered stand of trees on that development in West Pasco or in Southeast Pasco or in Southwest Pasco. And I will tell you, gentlemen, if you're shocked to see the clear cutting on Little Road, and I know you were because I saw it too, this is what Central and East Pasco have been living with over the last two or three decades. This is de rigueur for how we've developed our county. West Pasco hadn't seen it for a while because y'all don't clear huge parcels of land anymore. But starting at about Odessa and going east, this is what we live with every day. So please continue to pursue this. I think you're doing a good job. And I appreciate hearing the discussion. Thank you for letting me speak again.
Jennifer.
Thank you very much.
Is there, I make the assumption that you must have had some conversation at some point with somebody in the Forest Service?
Yes.
Is that information you can share with the staff so that as they are looking trying to evaluate how we formulate a regulation, maybe they can consult? It's always good to have a stable of experts that you can consult with, but if you could share that with them, I'm sure they'd find it helpful.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Missini. All right. Is there anybody else that has anything else to say? You again?
You got three speeches.
At least she's consistent.
She learned to speak three times today.
See, Missini, Missini, see what you did?
Nancy Hayeswood, 34110, a nice place, state city. I hadn't thought about, but as y'all were talking, what about a transition to some of those stands of trees? Like if some of them are getting out of the way, thin them out at the big front and let them grow into back so they aren't in the way of the roads and things. They'd still be there and maybe it would be of help to put that into consideration also.
All right, thank you. That wasn't so, that wasn't so bad.
Sometimes just clearing out the undergrowth can go a long way. Just save, save the nice trees and then, and clear all the undergrowth. And that can be really, really pretty.
All right, anything else from up here? If not.
What should I, Jerry?
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming and contributing.
And wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Storm water carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.
So you sign up for Pasco County's special needs registry. That means you have a bed at the special needs shelter if you want one, right? Nope, registration does not guarantee you a bed at a special needs shelter. It's simply registration, not a reservation. You should register with the Pasco County Special Needs Program before hurricane season begins. And you can register right on our website. Just go to pascoemergencymanagement.com and click on the special needs link. Then if Pasco County calls for evacuations and you live in an evacuation zone, we will call you to find out if you plan to stay in the special needs shelter. And Pasco County Emergency Management will provide transportation to and from the shelter if you need it. So remember, planning ahead is the best way to keep everyone safe. The special needs shelter should really be your last.